Well-planned and effective teaching and learning happens here daily and throughout Birmingham City Schools. The scholars in Birmingham City learn, excel, and grow into leaders who impact the community in science, technology, and education guided by student-focused educators who genuinely care. This is the foundation for the future. I am Reggie White, a fifth-grade math and science teacher here in Booker T. Washington, and the 2022 Alabama Teacher of the Year. Birmingham City Schools: Success Starts Here.
I'm Micah Beavers, a junior at Woodline High School. And in 2025, I plan on graduating high school with over 60 college credits from Jefferson State.
I'm Mikael Jackson, junior at Woodline High School. I attended early college program at Woodline. I plan on graduating with 60 college credits. I currently take classes at Lawson State Community College.
One of the major benefits is the students are exposed to college classes while they are still in high school. Not only do they earn college credit, but those credits also count as high school credit. So they receive free college tuition, free transportation to the college campuses, and free resources and supports to help them become successful and remain successful in the early college program.
It's like a small community of us, and we help each other and guide each other. We can always ask each other questions. And the relationships I've built with our college coordinator and the other students in the program.
It's basically just staying focused and just not focusing on one thing. So like not just focusing on my college classes because once I leave college, I gotta go back to Woodline, and I have to take my classes there. So I really just have to stay focused and just really be determined. It's all about determination.
Woodline has this program. Nobody else has it where your child is able to get up to 60 college credit hours, and they do not have to pay for it. It is a financial benefit and so many other benefits to helping your child reach their dreams and their goals. And that's what every parent wants.
This program allows scholars from across the district and throughout the county to come into our system and let us make a plan for your future that's going to be successful, bright, and engaging.
It has already helped me jumpstart my career goals of being an entrepreneur and a finance executive. I've had so much fun in the program, building relationships, and still enjoying my high school career. Success starts early with Early College at Woodline.
My daughter Letitia loves reading and learning. The two go hand in hand. In Birmingham City Schools, teachers provide the instruction and nurturing she needs.
When I grow up, I want to be a meteorologist. I started my journey here at Oxmoor Valley Elementary when I was five years old. They make learning fun with computers and technology. My teachers encourage me every day to do my best.
Birmingham City Schools: Success Starts Here.
These three Woodline High School students are getting an early taste of college life. They are part of Early College at Woodline. The students are taking college courses while in high school.
Early College helps me find out if I want to go to college because some people in high school, they don't know if they want to go to college. They don't know if it's for them.
The excitement of the students is really phenomenal. It's contagious. The students really want to get into something that is invigorating, that is challenging for these academically gifted students. So it's something just to see them become interested, apply, go through the process of becoming an early college student, and then getting onto those college campuses.
The students say they're taking classes at Jefferson State Community College and the University of Alabama at Birmingham.
At first, it was a little, you know, difficult adjusting to a college class because you being, you know, an underclassman in a room full of people that's majoring in big things like being a doctor or a lawyer is kind of intimidating. You know, you get a little nervous, you get a little shook up. But me personally, just in the mornings, wake up, be like, we gonna do great.
When they graduate from high school, the students say they'll have roughly 30 to 40 college credit hours that have a chance to graduate early and save money.
It's amazing because we can use the scholarships that we're gonna get. So like, we don't have to spend it out over four years. We just use it over our three years.
I am very proud because a lot of people don't get this opportunity, especially when you have people that are willing to pay for it for you. So you don't have to come out of pocket for anything, books, you know, extra fees, and your debt. They have it for you. So if your parents not coming out of pocket, they're not stressing about it.
The students say their college professors and early college coordinator are very helpful and want to see them succeed. You can learn more about the early college program at bhamcityschools.org. Inside the historic Omni Shoreum Hotel in Washington, DC. Representatives from 356 schools from across the United States packed the Regency Ballroom to receive their 2024 National Blue Ribbon Schools Award.
Epic Alternative Elementary School.
Epic Elementary School is among the 356 schools to receive this prestigious award. So what was it like walking across the stage?
It was surreal. It was a moment that has been in the making for a year. And to have that moment to finally approach and to be there again amongst great leaders in education, it was very rewarding and fulfilling.
We always say that success starts here in Birmingham City Schools. And today is just a testament to the hard work that happens in Birmingham City Schools every day, particularly the work that's happening at Epic Elementary School. Today, we're here in Washington, DC. And Epic Elementary School is recognized as a National Blue Ribbon School. We are so proud of the work that happens there every day.
Epic, along with four other Alabama schools, were named National Blue Ribbon Schools this year. Epic was labeled as a National Blue Ribbon School in 1994. This is incredible news for Epic and Birmingham City Schools.
We work really, really hard at Epic. Shout out to our teachers, our parents, our students, and our community stakeholders, our instructional superintendent, Dr. Tillman, who supports our networking. We really work hard. Our students work hard, and it is really a testament today.
U.S. Secretary of Education Dr. Miguel Cordana spoke before the crowd and offered words of encouragement.
And as we move forward, remember, never bet against America's teachers and principals. And when times get tough and you begin to question yourself due to the pressures you face, take a deep breath, look in the mirror, and ask yourself, who better than you?
President Joe Biden wasn't in attendance, but he did send his best wishes via a statement. President Biden said, quote, "The promise of America has long been tied to the promise of an education. A great education opens doors and changes lives. And for the past 41 years, the remarkable educators and leaders of our nation's Blue Ribbon Schools have served as pillars of opportunity for students and their families." On November 14th, Epic will be recognized in Montgomery by Alabama state leaders. In Washington, DC, I'm Fred Davenport, BCS Media.
Scholars in Birmingham City Schools get the tools and support they need for success every day. Educators encourage students from pre-kindergarten to high school to reach their highest potential. I'm Cory Cunningham, a Milken Award winner for 2023. It's exciting to collaborate with educators to help guide students. Today, thousands of BCS scholars are in classrooms and lab while working on engaging projects to boost their learning. Tomorrow, our students will be the leaders of Birmingham, Alabama, and the world.
Birmingham City Schools: Success Starts Here.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out. Welcome to the board meeting for April the 8th, 2025. We will begin with our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And today, we have the pleasure of Pastor Wilder of Bethel Baptist Church in Collegeville. And he is the guest of the board, and he was invited by Board Member Billups. And so I think Board Member Billups is gonna tell us a little bit more information about Pastor Wilder, and then we'll be in his hands for the invocation. And we'll ask that you all will stand for that and for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Billups?
All right. And so once again, we have the honor of having on this evening Pastor Wilder, who is the pastor of the historic Bethel Baptist Church in Collegeville Community, where he has served as a pastor since 1988 and also as the chairman of the board for the Bethel Baptist Church Community Restoration Fund since 2001. He is a retired worker, a member of the Alagasco Company since in 2013, and after working there for 24 years. And he has also worked previously at the Corporate Human Resource Manager at BE&amp;K Incorporated for 10 years as well. He is actively involved in a number of different civic community organizations that includes the United Ability, Birmingham Civil Rights Institute, the United Way, Birmingham Construction Industry, Girls, Inc., and a host of other organizations throughout the community. Pastor Wilder also holds a degree from the University of Alabama and also a master's of business administration from UAB and also theological degree from Birmingham Theological Seminary in 2018. He also holds degrees from Beeson Divinity School and recently received a doctorate from there. He's been known also as far as being a part of Birmingham Business Journal. It's a top 40 under 40, a top 50 over 50 with Leadership Birmingham, Leadership Shelby County, and United Way Board Member. He is a native of the Aliceville Community. He and his wife Michelle reside in Birmingham, and they have four grown children as well. He is an author of a number of different books that have been celebrated by members of the community that include Power Taking Ownership, Pursuing a Deeper Life, and Five Biblical Debts That You Owe Yourself. And so without further ado, I'd like to welcome Pastor Wilder.
Would you bow your heads with me as I pray? Father, first, we acknowledge you as God. In acknowledging you as God, we realize that you are the Creator and Author of all things. We realize that life and death is in your hands. In acknowledging you as God, we acknowledge our own insufficiencies and pray for your grace and for your guidance and for your leadership in all that we do. I invite your presence to guide each member of this board and all those in the audience that all that is done may be done in your wisdom and in the spirit of reverence. that all that is done may be done in your wisdom and in the spirit of reverence, the spirit of love. And as a result of all that is done this night, may all of us be better, and may your kingdom be served. May your name be honored and glorified. It is in Jesus' name that I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all. This meeting is now called to order. The mission of Birmingham City Schools is to guide all students to achieve excellence in a safe, secure, and in a nurturing environment. Again, I want to, before we move forward, offer a heartfelt thanks to Pastor Wilder for coming and being with us tonight, and thank you for all of your service, for all of the years that you have done and continue to do for the city, and for all of the constituency of Birmingham. We appreciate you. Colleagues, we will now have the adoption of the agenda. Oh, I guess you also noticed that Dr. Sullivan looks a little different tonight. For those who don't know, Dr. Lamar is our new chief of staff. And so this is his first meeting leading, and I've told him that we were going to haze him a little bit tonight. And, but we're going to be kind, and we're just happy to have him with us and excited for all the work that he's done. He's made an impact in a short amount of time. And so, Dr. Lamar, we're going to take it easy on you.
All right, well, I think Big Walt already started a hazing process.
And he was the exact board member I had in mind. He won't let you get out of here easy. Colleagues, we will now have the adoption of the agenda. It is recommended that the agenda of April eighth, twenty twenty five, meeting be adopted as outlined. Dr. Lamar, will there be any additions or deletions at this time?
Mr. President, I will have a, an item that needs to be removed before the personnel section.
Okay, all right. Colleagues, at this time, you've heard the recommendation. May I have someone to move in second?
So move.
Second.
Let the record show that it was moved by Board Member Billups and second by Board Member Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, any abstention? All right, the agenda has been approved. All right, colleagues, we now will entertain our minutes. We should, you should have received some corrected minutes. We will now have the approval of the corrected minutes. It is a recommendation of the superintendent that the minutes from the board meeting for March the eleventh, twenty twenty five, the minutes from the work session from March twenty five, and the minutes from the special call board meeting from March twenty five, that they be, that the corrected minutes be approved as submitted. May I have someone to move in second?
Move the item.
Second.
Let the record show it was moved by Board Member Williams and second by Board Member Billups. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, any abstention? All right, thank you, colleagues. So, Dr. Lamar, at this time, I think we're ready for our presentations and special recognitions. It's in your hands.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time here, we will have presentations and special recognitions. We'll start with the Student Youth Government Group presentation, and we'll ask Ms. Terry Harville, Chief Social Impact Officer with the YMCA.
Good evening. In the superintendent's absence, Chief of Staff Lamar, President Meadows, all of the board members, administration staff, and to all of you, it is my extreme privilege and honor to be able to hopefully start this meeting off right with some good news for some, some familiar news to some, some new news to others. But it gives me great pleasure as the Chief Social Impact Officer for the YMCA of Greater Birmingham to have had an opportunity for thirty three years to serve young people in the city of Birmingham, particularly through our Youth in Government program. I was a part of this program through West End High School. Some of you may remember Mr. Taylor Green. He was the best at it. He helped produce leaders in this city like myself, like Chief of Staff Cedric Sparks, like Principal of W J Christian Mario Lumsey, like Maisha Hutchinson, Chief of Staff for City Councilor Darlo Quinn. And here recently, we have to boast, we have Kylan Benson, who is a graduate of Ramsey High School, who is still a part of us, who's at Harvard, who's making sure that our students are still doing well. He says, I need to make sure they're still winning. We have Gillian Jolly, who is now at Yale, doing the same thing. What is Youth in Government, you might ask? I'm so glad you asked. Youth in Government is a program that is nationally based through the YMCA, but is school-based, and it gives students an opportunity to learn hands-on judicial and legislative processes of government. What that looks like is, for the judicial session, our students get a chance to do mock trials. But more than that, these students have had a chance to work with some of Birmingham's finest attorneys and judges that Birmingham and the state has to offer. We have a unique partnership with the Birmingham Bar Association, where they not only coach our students, but they have endowed a scholarship for a student who chooses to go to a particular school and to study law. In the legislative session, our students get a chance to take over the Senate and the State House, and they become the legislators and the senators. They write bills, they get a chance to learn about government firsthand. They also get a chance to have leadership roles. I am so excited to tell you, this school year, we have had students at every level of state leadership there is, such as Supreme Court justices, governor's cabinet, media team, lobbyists. We've had statesmen in both the House and the Senate. And for the first time ever that I know of, and I've been involved in the program since nineteen ninety one, we had Tyra Davis, who was voted in as the Senate Pro Tem Leader. So for those of you who are not a student in your government, that means in the Senate in Montgomery, she was running it. That deserves a hand clap. You can clap. So, I'd just like to let you guys know, since COVID, we have had students year-round from both Ramsey and Parker High School. This is just a small number. We've had over one hundred students to be involved in this program throughout the district. For our judicial competition, we also have students who join us from Jackson, Olent, Carver, and Woodlawn, and some of you have attended at the Jefferson County Courthouse. So you've seen firsthand that they can fight any fight in any courtroom and win. So there is a video. If it is queued up and ready, we'd like to show that video first before you hear from our students very quickly.
Good afternoon. My name is Robert Gaines, senior at Ramsey High School. And today I'm here at the Alabama State House, a part of the YMCA Youth in Government Legislative Program. This is my second year, and I currently serve on the YMCA Youth Government Legislative Board, where I am the Youth Secretary of Law Enforcement. This is, like I said, my second year. The Youth Legislative Program has provided me with more insight with politics, getting me more engaged within my political career. The YMCA Youth in Government Program is a good program to help kids within not just Alabama, but all over, get more involved in politics and advocate not just for their city, but their state as a whole. Not only that, YMCA Youth Legislative has taught me how to write bills, how to advocate for myself, and how to carry myself as a person in everyday, day-to-day life. If we had more programs and funding for programs like this, more kids in Birmingham and the state of Alabama as a whole will be more inclined to how to carry themselves and also be well-rounded with the Alabama Youth Legislative Program, and how to write bills, not just write bills, but being able to know how the government works on a day-to-day operation. If we kept pushing things like youth judicial, youth legislature, and youth in cities like cities of Montgomery, Alabama, I mean Birmingham, Mobile, Tuscaloosa, it would get more kids involved, and the city will see a great outcome from this program.
My friend Brandon is a second-year participant in the Youth Assembly Delegation sponsored by the YMCA. Over these couple of years, I've seen a growth in his interest in civics. He's also expressed a desire to have a position as a civil leader. Also, as an educator, just the experience that I've seen today, I believe that it will be beneficial to students, both academically and socially, and it would be an excellent opportunity for our city to grow our youth by providing funds for more students to participate in the Assembly Delegation.
We believe that success does start here. And so, without further ado, I would like for our students to simply introduce themselves and what school they're from. And then at the end, Kumarien Morris and Shiloh Britt from Parker will share some words of their own.
My name is Erica Jones, and I go to Ramsey High School.
Robert Gaines, senior at Ramsey High School.
My name's Jamika Garrett, and I go to Parker High School.
My name is Shiloh Britt, and I go to D A H Parker High School.
My name is Brandon Moss, and I go to Ramsey Abbey High School.
My name is Kumarien Morris, and I am from A H Parker High School. Good evening, everyone, to this theme council and my peers. Youth in Government is very important. I come today to encourage our council to add this into the curriculum. It is important to remember that we are the future, and we are the new leaders of the world. I had an opportunity this year to be on the Supreme Court, where I served as an associate judge with the Chief Justice. And as you guys saw in the video, I was also a Chief Justice candidate. I didn't get to win, but that's because I'm a senior. This program is really important. I joined this in the year of twenty four, and I was able to meet and get an opportunity to see legislative work, where I was recognized on outstanding judge, on outstanding legislative writ, written writing. So I encourage everyone at this meeting to remember, we are the future, and this curriculum will be very important for your new bills and your new legislative writing. Thank you.
Hello again. Again, my name is Shiloh Britt, and I want to say this in a room full of leaders, movers, shakers, from a future one to all of you, I just want to say publicly, thank you to Ms. Dismuke, who is my past English teacher back there. Thank you to Ms. Harville, and most importantly, thank you to mom. If it wasn't for people like, like these women, these incredible women right here, I wouldn't be in the position where I am today. I want to do culinary. That's been my main goal ever since high school. But these people have made it to where I know that I can walk into rooms like this, any courtroom, State House, any place, and I know that I belong there. What people say ignorant is bliss. We have to teach my peers, your nephews, nieces, sons and daughters, we have to teach them how to actually function in today's society, whether they agree with their legislators or senators or not. If they don't like someone who's in office, teach them that they can change it. We always believe that just because they have a title, they have power. We give them power. So I just want to say thank you for giving us this opportunity. Thank you for making it accessible. And like my peer just said, please put this in the curriculum. It will help us out so much. We have a lot, a lot of bright students that have never been able to shine because of certain dimmers in today's world. But as one who's been able to shine and shine brightly, thank you.
And we simply came to say thank you. Without your support, without the support of our principals, and just be clear, I don't do the work with these students. I can't do this without teachers at the school. So once again, Ms. Dismuke, who's there after hours, she doesn't get paid a dime extra to do that. This is not a school-based program. It's a YMCA program. But they're there during intercession, they're there after hours. Without your support, it wouldn't be possible. We simply, number one, want you to be aware that the program is happening. It's been happening over fifty years. It's going to continue, but we can't do it without your support, and we thank you for this time today.
Before you all leave, Ms. Harville, I first want to allow Ms. Harville, who, you want to comment on the program that you? Okay, well, I want to thank Mrs. Latisha for, you know, asking and ensuring that we hear this presentation tonight. And I think that, you know, we, I think all of us have visited the courtroom. I think I've seen most of my peers, colleagues there, but, you know, you all spoke so elegantly tonight. You deeply, I think articulated things that need to be heard in society, especially where we are right now. I mean, you guys aren't just the leaders of tomorrow, you're leading right now. You just led this room. You just, and we're all, you know, in your space. You took ownership of the room, and you, you're now the leader. And so you shifted all of our thoughts, whatever we were thinking before you started to speak. I guarantee you, everybody in here, after you finish speaking, have new thoughts in their minds. That's what leaders do. They show up in the room, regardless of what the assignment was, you then become the agenda. And so I just want to say amazing work. Thank you, Ms. Harville. We just appreciate you for being a champion. And so I was just writing down Harvard and Yale, and so it's just, I'm deeply moved. And we want to, whatever we can do to continue to improve and grow this program. Of course, we'll be working with Dr. Sullivan and trying to make sure that that happens. So I think Mr. Wilson said he had something to say, and I'll open it.
Absolutely. I think you said it all, Mr. President. Impressive. I stepped out, and believe me, you had my attention out on the monitor. But full circle moment for me. When Ms. Dismuke's name was called, let me show you how it works in education. Her dad not only coached me at Willona High School, but coached Dr. Sullivan at Woodlawn. So please tell Coach Jared Dismuke, Big Walt, say aye. We're so proud of the work that you're doing, and thank you very much.
Any more, Ms. Williams?
You, to Board Member Wilson, you have said, you've essentially said it all, but in completely a spirit shift for me. As leaders, there are moments where you question whether your work is working. And I'm such an emotional girl today. But you all speaking tonight and coming before us and sharing your heart and your experiences through the video and just through your words, and I know several of you all, I've had a number of conversations with you and encouraged you along the way. And so it's really just a blessing to be able to see that, for me, the ability to serve in a season like this and witness you all walking in what your purpose is and being able to articulate that your career path is one way, but this is opened up not only for you, but for your peers in the school, and then challenging the audience with their own children and nieces and nephews is so important. I am really excited about what you all are doing and what your futures look like. I remember the day that you had your mock trials, and the Birmingham Bar Association are huge players in the success of this, as well as our teachers back at each of the schools that have supported the students and parents. And Judge Smitherman, oh my gosh, like you all, I have this video, again, sometimes you get, you wonder if your work is worth it when you're working in this role. For me, I do, because I'm very serious and grateful for the opportunity to serve in this capacity. But the day that you all were closing out your mock trials, Judge Smitherman, undawned, if that's a word, took off her robe, her robe, and she robed every single student in there and spoke over them. And this isn't something that she did just on that occasion, but it's something that she does every occasion. And she talked about the fit of the robe, and even though her robe was custom fit for her, every single scholar that put that robe on, it fit them. And she reminded them, the reason why it fitted them is because they fit in America. They fit in the opportunity to serve, they fit in their futures. And so I am so excited for you all about, I hope somebody from over here is challenging me in four, in four years, not the next four years, but in four years. But walking alongside and learning and really taking what you've gained to the next level, because we need young leaders like yourselves, and so I'm so excited. We hear you challenging us on adding this into curriculum. That's definitely a Dr. Sullivan and our, and our executive staff team around what that looks like. That's definitely a Dr. Sullivan and our executive staff team around what that looks like, but the board has influence around encouraging something like that to happen. So again, congratulations for committing yourselves to be a part of this after school hours, not during school hours. And the Y being a pillar in the community for generations and generations. Thank you all for what you've presented tonight and for your commitment to your futures.
Mr. Billups?
Yeah, I just want to say just a few short words on here. I just want to thank you again because this is a reflection of what we talk about, about having the power and the promise of partnerships. And then what this creates is an opportunity for students to have self-advocacy and we see that. And what we want to see is this type of partnership in everything that we do that is impactful, that this youth see how effective, how engaging, and the empowered them to do even more and have that voice to proclaim, to speak into existence of things that are not as though they were. And so thank you all again for being out here tonight and sharing. And thank you for reaching out and being in partnership with Birmingham City Schools. Thank you.
Ms. Harville?
I'll be brief. First, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Harville, for your passion for decades, for what you do. And I always believe and I know that there is so much power in access and exposure and we see that highlighted here on tonight. Access and exposure, it will shift your mind, it will put you on a trajectory that you didn't even know existed. And I think, you know, Shiloh kind of highlighted that for us on tonight. And so we want to continue providing access, opportunity, exposures, because we know that those are life-altering experiences. And so thank you for providing those. And thank you all for just stepping in and willing and saying, hey, I'm confident enough, I'm powerful enough, I deserve this, I can be here, I'm smart enough to be here. And it's true, all of it is true. So kudos to you all for doing the work. And thank you to your teachers and your sponsors who put in the effort to do that as well. Very proud of you all.
Ms. Ball?
I echo what everyone else has said. Ms. Harville, I just encourage you and students to get together and come back to Birmingham City and explain to our leadership what you mean by expanding opportunities with the curriculum and that kind of thing. We'd love to hear from you.
That was their idea. I had nobody to know about that.
Well, what does that mean? Just let us know. Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan?
Well, I just wanted to, again, just echo what everybody's, you know, said. I know me personally, my story, I really didn't get involved into politics until after college. And seeing this and you all getting involved at such a young age is just heartwarming to me. So I just want to appreciate you all for sharing your story and hopefully you're encouraging other people who are watching online. So thank you again.
All right, thank you all, Ms. Harville. I'm sure we'll see you all soon. Dr. Lamar?
All right, at this time here, this is Autism Month, so we asked Ms. Pamela Wimbush if she'll come up for the resolution presentation.
As the Director of Birmingham City Schools Special Education Department, tonight I would like to present to you the Birmingham City Schools Board of Education Resolution, recognizing April as Autism Awareness Month. Whereas autism spectrum disorder is a complex developmental condition that affects the social, communication, and behavioral skills of individuals and continues to be a significant area of focus in education and healthcare. And whereas autism spectrum disorder affects individuals of all ages, ethnicities, and socioeconomic backgrounds, with approximately one in 36 children diagnosed with autism, as reported by the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention, CDC. And whereas Autism Awareness Month observed each year in April, serves as an opportunity to increase understanding and acceptance of people with autism and to raise awareness about the challenges they face, as well as the importance of fostering an inclusive environment that embraces neurodiversity. And whereas the Birmingham City Schools community is committed to providing a nurturing and supportive educational environment for all students, including those with autism, ensuring that each child has access to tools, resources, and opportunities they need to succeed. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Birmingham City Schools Board of Education proclaims the month of April 2025 as Autism Awareness Month in Birmingham City Schools. Be it further resolved that the Board encourages all educators, students, staff, and families to participate in activities that promote awareness, understanding, and acceptance of individuals with autism, and to support efforts that promote the inclusion of all students regardless of their abilities in every aspect of school life. Presented this day, this eighth day of April 2025. Thank you.
At this time here, we have the Teacher of the Year presentation by Dr. Hines.
Good evening. To our Board President, our Superintendent and his assent, Dr. Lamar, thank you for filling in. To our, all of our Board members, we want to present to you the 2024-25 Teacher of Teacher, Teachers of the Year, as well as all of our school winners through our video.[1011.13]
Each year, following a process that's very probably nerve-wracking for those teachers, we select, we have a committee that selects the highest performing teachers for our district. I would like to introduce to you those winners for elementary and for secondary. Our second, our elementary teacher of the year is Ms. Andrea Burrell-Bobbs. Ms. Bobbs, will you stand? Stay standing. Ms. Bobbs has dedicated 20 years of making a difference in the lives of children within Birmingham City Schools. Inspired by her grandmother to pursue teaching, she is passionate about advocating for students with mental health challenges in the classroom. Ms. Bobbs values building strong relationships with her students, believing meaningful connections inspire them to become active learners. She focuses on creating real-world learning experiences to support the whole child. After reviewing data from a benchmark reading assessment, Ms. Bobbs leveraged the Birmingham City Schools Intervention Program SPIRE, her letters training and science of reading principles, to design take-home fluency packs. These resources were implemented not only in her classroom, but across the entire second grade team. Her dedication yielded significant results with 70% of second-grade students meeting their benchmark goals at the end of the year. Congratulations to Ms. Andrea Bobbs. Ms. Bobbs, will you come forward, please?
I mean, that's amazing. I mean, to go above and beyond and the work that she did to not only impact her class, but her entire grade level. Again, it kind of goes back to what we were saying to the students. Leaders shine regardless of what position or title that they have by their name.
That's right.
And that, I mean, I'm really taken aback, and I just hope that you continue to be encouraged to do great work. We need you, our students need you, to create pathways for them. The work that you've done will carry them so far in life, and that foundation just opens doors, as we all know that you learn to read, and then you read to learn. And so, the impact that you're having, I mean, I'm glad that we have you in Birmingham City Schools.
Yes.
I know Ms. Stitt is happy to have you at Sun Valley, and because the nation needs you. You have a gift that, I mean, urban districts across this country need people like you that are making a difference for the students who need you the most. So, I'm just amazed at what you've done, and so, I'm grateful that we have you. Mr. Collins?
None. So, I'm so very proud of you. Yeah, I think this makes number two for Sun Valley in a row. So, back-to-back, that's what we do. But I can tell you, I went up to the school, and her classroom was just excited about their teacher being selected, and that gave me a lot of excitement and encouragement. I want to say, we didn't get a picture with Ms. Stitt in it, and we got to have a leader of the school in the picture, so can we get a redo? Yeah. Where our photograph at? Yeah, let's get a redo.
While they're taking the picture again, I do want to say, that is amazing to have back-to-back. So, that speaks about the culture that the leader sets in that building. And, so she's a Woodland graduate, that's what Mr. Billings is talking about over here. But yeah, she, I got a chance to meet Ms. Stitt when we went to PELP, and so, she is an exemplary leader, and so, it's very befitting that she takes the picture.
All right. Everybody got camera? Ready, three, two, one.
Colleagues, are there any more comments before they move forward?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So, to, I had an opportunity to, I think we were doing a gift, giving away books that I think Counselor Woods and his group was doing, but before that, we had an opportunity to see the data and the work that the school is doing, and they had an opportunity to share with the parents. And I can tell you, it makes it, it gives me a lot of confidence that our children are in good hands. I was very impressed with the approach and the results that they were getting in our schools, taking our children from point A past point B to point C, and setting a trajectory where our students will be successful going forward. So, to Principal Stitt, thank you. I've been around Sun Valley for a really long time, in and out of the school, and this is nothing against any other principal that has come, because I've worked well with all of them, but I can tell you, you've done an amazing job, and I think, I thank you for that and your team. You're only as good as the team you have around you, and I think you build a great team, so congratulations. Maybe you're number three.
Okay, moving along. Our secondary teacher of the year for Birmingham City Schools is Mr. Audrin Bennett. Mr. Bennett is a seventeen-year veteran in education. He has taught in Birmingham City Schools throughout his career, spending the last eleven years at George Washington Carver High School as a 12th-grade U.S. government economics and advanced placement African-American history teacher. Growing up in a single-parent household shaped Bennett into the teacher he is today. Without a father at home to guide him, he found himself looking for a male role model he could look up to. Like many kids he teaches today, he was lost. However, he found himself in a social studies classroom in East Syracuse, New York, which changed his life forever. His fourth-grade teacher, Mr. Sampson, ignited a passion for social studies and a thirst for knowledge. Mr. Sampson gave him the ability to analyze history, explore the world, and understand that being different is something to be proud of. This set in motion the teacher that he would become, because he wanted to give students like himself an opportunity to see the world through a different lens. Through field trips to the Legacy Museum in Montgomery, voters write, voters' roundtable forums, financial literacy seminars, and African food tasting, Mr. Bennett ensures his students have the experiences of real-world connections. Mr. Bennett is not only our secondary teacher of the year, but he is now the Sweet Sixteen of the state of Alabama. the teachers of the year at a luncheon on May 9th at 11:00 at the Harvard Center. Please be sure to RSVP so that we can have space for you. Again, congratulations to both of our teachers of the year. And we have real checks for you, too.
Colleagues, are there any comments at this time? Ms. Williams?
Quick question. Congratulations to both of you all. Ms. Bobbs, is your, was your family member the librarian at Miles College, Ms. Bobbs? I see some head nods. Ooh, she came from really, really good stock. Congratulations again. Yes. Okay, you married well, you married well. Okay, okay, okay. Good, good.
She just got to get in.
Jason.
Go ahead, Ms. Bourne.
I just want to congratulate Mr. Bennett for making it to the Sweet Sixteen. We are so proud of that. You make Birmingham City Schools proud, and we've got our fingers crossed that you will help take us to the end on that one. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I just want to say, and to agree with Ms. Bourne, we are proud of you and think you're going to go higher than the Sweet Sixteen. And I think it's also important to just share, in the piece that you all did, to have a black male teacher, which you are in, you're a super minority across the nation, to be doing the work that you're doing. Where you are doing it specifically, I can only imagine the impact that you're having on the young man and all of the scholars over at Carver. And so, to know at fourth grade what you wanted to do and to now be doing that here, we are honored to have you here in Birmingham City Schools, and so, stick with us. I hope nobody wants you back in Syracuse, New York, you know? The weather's much better down here, and so is the food, and so, we hope that you stay here, and again, just thank you, and also shout out to Ms. Hines. I think it was, we had one year in between, I think we were at J.O. last year, but the year before that, so we weren't back-to-back, but it was one in between, but we're still going to claim the culture that Ms. Hines is setting over at Carver, and you all see the growth and the improvement, and so, we would be remiss if we didn't shout you out as well, that the culture that you set and changing in that school, to have two teachers of the year within a three-year span, many people probably wouldn't think that that was possible, so I want to give you your flowers in the presence of everyone. Thank you so much, Ms. Hines.
At this time, we would like to recognize our National Board Teachers for this school year.
So, our National Board Teacher Certification is the most respected professional certification available in education. It provides numerous benefits to teachers, students, and schools. It was designed to develop, retain, and recognize accomplished teachers, and to generate ongoing improvement in schools nationwide. According to over a decade of research, 91% of teachers engaging with National Board Certification reported it directly impacted their instructional practices. Today, we have a total of 67 National Board Certified Teachers working in our district, including Dr. Pamela Williams, our Chief Academics and Accountability Officer, Ms. Delilah Stitt, Principal at Sun Valley Elementary School, and a host of other school and district administrators, including myself. We would like to take this opportunity to recognize two of our educators who have accepted the challenge of improving their professional practice. Over the past three years, these educators have been working on the certification, which consists of three portfolio components and a computer-based assessment. We would like to pin our newly certified National Board Teachers. When I call your name, please come forward. If you have guests with you this evening, they may accompany you. Ms. Madison Abney, please come forward. Ms. Abney is a second-grade teacher at Hayes K-8 School. She's certified in early-to-middle childhood literacy reading language arts. Dr. Allison also defended his dissertation from Sanford University in December, which means he was working on achieving two challenging professional milestones at the same time. Dr. Allison also certified in early-to-middle childhood literacy reading and language arts. We would like for Mr. Allison's guest to please come and join him. Look at his village. Sun Valley Elementary School. Yes, come back up. Who needed to come back up?
She needs to take off her board.
Oh, Madison, okay. Okay, Ms. Abney. Additionally, we will also honor our National Board Certified Teachers at the Teacher of the Year Luncheon. Thank you.
At this time, we'd like to yield the floor to Dr. Christine Norman to recognize our Media Specialist of the Year, followed by Dr. Taco Lewis for our Counselor of the Year.
Good evening.
Good evening.
President Meadows, Dr. Lamar, Dr. Sullivan in his absence, board members, and our guest. Welcome to School Library Month and School Library Week. The 2025 theme, Drawn to the Library, honors the impact that libraries have on their surrounding communities. Our school library supports everyone, and the library is the hub of the school. Thanks to all the librarians across the district for the work that you do for your community, school community, and the BCS family. The Librarian of the Year is selected by their peers. They look at what the impact the person has on their school library, community, state, and nation. Another aspect is mentorship. What steps do they take to mentor their students and other librarians? Professionally, how does the individual improve their craft and share their knowledge with others in the field and beyond? Our Librarian of the Year is always looking to help her students and coworkers. Every time I visit the Dr. Donetta Kenan Thornton Owens Library, named after a former graduate and longtime Smithville resident, it's buzzing with students working on computers, in small groups, and asking for assistance with projects and technology. The students and her coworkers always and also like to visit, because she often gives words of encouragement. Her laugh and smile are contagious. The library is truly a hub at her school. All are welcome at any time and is a safe place for everyone in the building. She has been at A.H. Parker High School since 2014, after being the librarian at Curry and Jackson Olent. She also works with technology in the summer to ensure our students have devices at all the schools. She has attended local, state, and national library conferences throughout her career. She is always eager to share what she's learned, what authors she's met, and the many pictures that she's taken with the authors. Her book club continues to instill and inspire the love of reading. A few words from other librarians across our district. I can attest to her remarkable ability to go above and beyond in providing exceptional services. She not only fosters a welcome and inclusive environment for all patrons, but also inspires a love of learning and exploration within our community. Someone else stated, "She is always eager to learn and is more than willing to share what she knows. She's kind, compassionate, and more deserving of this honor." She's an educator who educates more than just students. She is truly BCS-strong. Our 2024 Librarian of the Year and also a National Board Certified Teacher is Beverly Brown from Arthur Harold Parker High School. School Principal, School Counselor, Mr. Quentin Jackson. Mr. Jackson has been a school counselor with Birmingham City Schools for five years. The Recognize American School Counselor Association Model Program, RAMP, recognizes schools committed to delivering school counseling programs aligned with the American School Counseling Association, which is the national framework. The RAMP designation demonstrates to administrators, school boards, families, and the community at large that the schools have committed to supporting the mission of the school and the district. Mr. Jackson will be honored during a special ceremony at the American School Counsel Association's Annual Conference in July for making an exemplary commitment to their school counseling program. The RAMP application process is the culmination of successfully implementing the ASCA National Model Framework to show evidence of direct and indirect services to students, program planning, and improved student outcomes as a result of the school counseling program. Principal Walters states that Counselor Jackson works tirelessly to build genuine connections with each student, creating a safe, welcoming space where students feel valued and understood. One of his many strengths is the ability to listen and provide personalized guidance that empowers students to overcome challenges and realize their potential. Mr. Jackson is known throughout the building as the gentle giant, who loves, respects, and provides a listening ear to all. One initiative that Mr. Jackson has created, an Inspiration Nation, which is a male mentoring small group program. The group meets monthly inside the school walls with mentoring sessions, where men from the community come and encourage young males to set personal and professional goals, develop emotional intelligence, and navigate life's challenges with resilience and confidence. Mr. Jackson's favorite quote is, "If you look good, you feel good." As the coordinator of school counseling for Birmingham City Schools, I know firsthand how hardworking, passionate, and dedicated Mr. Jackson is as a school counselor. He continuously pours into our scholars. A gentle giant, yes, he is. He is always pleasant, he has a calm and welcoming spirit, and he is always willing to jump in and do whatever needs to be done to assist others. He has a calming spirit when working in high-conflict situations, and he is truly an asset to the Birmingham City Schools Counseling Department. Mr. Jackson believes that exposure is key. He believes that exposing scholars to the possibility of what is next for them in the future can guide them to whom they want to be in the future and in life. He became a school counselor because he believes there are not enough male school counselors, and there aren't. And there is a lack of African-American males to demonstrate to students that they can become an educator and a trusted adult to show adults, to show students, to navigate the challenges of adolescents, early childhood relationships, and career development. Mr. Jackson is unable to be here this evening, but he was recognized as the 2025 School Counselor of the Year during National School Counselor Appreciation Week in February, and he will be recognized at the Teacher of the Year Luncheon in May.
I would just like to say thank you all as well. I know in education, being an educator, it is not easy. You think about the tasks that are put on you, the demands from central office to the federal, to the state, local levels, and just feeling the energy that you all are bringing to the table today is very much, you can feel it. And going through those schools and all the schools here in Birmingham, you see that passion for teaching, so I just personally wanted to say thank you as well, before we move to the next section. So, thank you. And if we give them one more hand, please. At this point, we will have the employee recognition, and we'll ask Ms. Seaborn if she will come to the front.
Board President Meadows, and Dr. Lamar, and Dr. Sullivan in his absence. As we are continuing on with the theme of excellence tonight, I have one recognition coming from Oxmoor Valley, and I'll read that nomination letter now. I would recommend Shawna... Am I saying it right? Shawna?
Shawna.
Shawna, I want to make sure I say her name right. It's important. Shawna McGriff for the Above and Beyond Call of Duty Award. Shawna McGriff for the Above and Beyond Call of Duty Award for her exceptional contributions as the counselor at Oxmoor Valley Elementary School. Mrs. McGriff arrives early each morning and stays beyond school hours to prepare for various committees that she leads, including peer helpers and the Beta Club. She has also actively contributed to our school community by implementing a girls' mentoring group that helps female scholars in grades four and five to build a deeper self-esteem and social skills. Furthermore, she provides monthly mental health check-ins for all students in grades K through five. Her work with the scholars enhances our students' learning experiences and reinforces the importance of mental health awareness at our school. Her commitment to professional excellence is admirable, and she is a deserving candidate for the Above and Beyond Call of Duty Award. Her unwavering commitment to students, innovative approach to counseling, and dedication to our community are beacons of support and inspiration. Come on up, lady. [applause] And Dr. Lamar, she was nominated by Lakeisha Moody, who is the Assistant Principal at Oxmoor Valley. Just wanted you all to know that. And that concludes our presentations for tonight. Thank you.
Each speaker or spokesperson will have two minutes, and I don't think we have three or more. And so the timer will be on the screen, and I always love to give credit where credit is due. I know it's election season, and I want to give a shout out again to Board Member Sullivan. When we first got on the board, Community Voice was at the end of the agenda, and oftentimes community members would have to wait. As you all know, we can get a little lengthy, and community members would have to wait until the end of the night to actually be able to voice their concerns. And so Mr. Sullivan made the recommendation that we move the Community Voice up on the agenda, and so I wanted to just give him his credit. It means a lot to hear from the community. And so the first name up is not a stranger to any of us. Why y'all laughing? Y'all must know who I'm about to call. Yes, right. Mr. Ishman, you already know the rules. Next, all right, all right, Mr. Ishman, it was good to see you. Next, we have, it looks like, is it Rachel Nixon? Is that correct? You can come to the podium if you're still here. She's not here? Okay. All right. And the last name is another name we know very well, Mr. Emory Kidd. That's a nice boot you have on there, Mr. Kidd.
Right on the ground, praise God. Good evening, everyone. Dr. Lamar, Dr. Sullivan, I know you're listening in the background here. Of all board members, community, and staff, of all in attendance, I'd just like to thank you all for all that you do. I truly got to tell you that you all have it under control, and I want to thank all of our board members for pouring into our community, for all that you do for our students and staff, all the recognitions. I actually heard a couple of people that I know are going to be our future governors, our future mayors, our future city councilmen, school board members. All that you are doing here, it really is hitting that line of innovative, so I'm thanking you all for moving in the right direction there. I've got a couple of things going on with AEA, and so we're going to have the AEA Day at the Capitol on April the 23rd. I'm giving you a personal invitation, board members, if you're free, join us there at that time. This is a vital time that we show the state that we are important and funding is an important issue, and so we need you there to help us. I want to bring something to you because this clock is running rather fast. So we recognize some great administrators earlier who are just exemplary, and we are thankful for about 94% of all of our administrators in this district. But that last few, I want us to keep in mind that when we see a trend of people entering into the transfer portal at a high rate to go to other locations, or we have a high turnover rate at some of these schools, I am begging that we take advantage of the surveys that are coming from our staff and faculty along with the now the retention rates at some of these schools and take a good look, because if a wheel doesn't work on this track, let's get them on another track. If they don't work on that track, then maybe a contract extension may not be in order. Thank you all for your time.
At this time, we're now ready, colleagues, to entertain our Consent Agenda. It has been recommended that we approve the Consent Agenda items. Colleagues, are there any items that need to be pulled from consideration?
Mr. President.
Ms. Williams.
Item H. Yes, sir.
Correct.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir. Mr. Wilson.
Item C.
Colleagues, are there any more items that need to be pulled at this time? All right, colleagues, we will now entertain the Consent Agenda minus Items H and Items C. May I have someone to move and second the Consent Agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Let the record show that it was moved by Board Member Bowman, and second by Board Member Smith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstention? All right, thank you. The Consent Agenda has been approved minus the aforementioned items. Colleagues, at this time, we will take them in alphabetical order, not the order in which they were pulled. We will first entertain Item C under the Consent Agenda, which is the Administrative School and Family Engagement Communication Summit Media that was brought by Ms. Stewart. May I have someone to move and second the item?
Move the item.
Let the record show it was moved by Board Member Collins and second by Board Member Smith, Mr. Wilson.
Roll call vote.
All right. We will start with Ms. Williams.
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yes.
All right. Let the record show that Item C on the Consent Agenda has been approved with eight affirmative votes and one abstention. Colleagues, we will now entertain Item H on the Consent Agenda, which happens to be caught in my, let me see yours. My printer didn't cut it off, thank you. My printer cut it off. It is the student recruitment that was brought to us by Dr. Joanne Stevens. May I have someone to move and second the item?
Move the item.
Second.
Let the record show it was moved by Board Member Collins and second by Board Member Smith. Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues and Dr. Stevens, my struggle with supporting this particular item is just that I think, I feel that there's probably more we could do with our truancy department in really working to identify these students that we have that Casey has told us that they have gone back to recruit and to pull back. It just, I just have concerns about if we are contracting other partners to do this work, then what are our outcomes from our staff internally that should be, you know, that should be a part of their role? So I just would like to see our resources going maybe to a different location or, not location, but in a different capacity, colleagues. So that's just my, I think, last time I felt, not I think, I know last time I felt the same way, and I still feel the same way. We're a year later with this contract, not minimizing the work that they've done for the district thus far, but I just think it's better use of our internal resources to maximize the staff that we have that's already been employed to, in fact, go and identify our students and recruit and have an intentional retention effort with our students that we're aware of in the district. So for that reason, Mr. President, if we could have a roll call vote, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. It was time, we'll start with Mrs. Smith.
Pass.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
No. Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Let the record show that Item H was approved with eight affirmatives and one no vote. All right, colleagues, at this time, it has been recommended that we accept the donations from the prospective donors. May I have someone to move and second donations?
Second.
Let the record show that it was moved by Board Member Phillips and second by Board Member Smith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, let the record show that the donations have been accepted. Colleagues, we will now entertain Personnel Actions. It is recommended that the attached Personnel Actions be approved. Dr. Lamar, you mentioned earlier that there was one that you would like to pull from consideration?
Yes, Mr. President, on page five, I am requesting that we pull Item S82537. That's on page five, Item S82537.
All right, colleagues, are there any other items that need to be pulled at this time? All right.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Wilson, yes, sir. It's okay.
I have two, on page seven, S82509, on page seven, S82509, also on page seven, S82503.
So that's S82503, S82509, both on page seven?
Yes, sir.
All right, colleagues, are there any other items that need to be pulled at this All right. Colleagues, we will now entertain Personnel Actions minus Item S82537. That is being pulled by Dr. Lamar, and minus Items S82503 and S82509 being pulled by Board Member Wilson. May I have someone to move the rest of the Personnel Actions and second?
Move the item.
Second.
Let the record show it was moved by Board Member Collins and second by Board Member Harville. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. The Personnel Actions minus the aforementioned have been approved. At this time, we will take them in order.
I have the same question for both of them. Football season was over in December, where in April, it's time for spring football practice. Publicly, I want the question answered, why are these coaches just getting paid for the 2024 football season? One's a supplement and the other one is a coordinator. I know you can't answer that from a distance, but I wanted to ask that question publicly, and I'll be waiting on the answer, because I know you can't answer it from here. But if this is a problem, we need to fix it, because my phone is blowing up about coaches not getting their supplements. And again, football season was over in December.
Absolutely. We will.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. At this time, colleagues, we will vote on both of those items together. That is S82503 and S85209. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstention? So at this time, Dr. Lamar, we're ready for Cabinet Reports and Strategic Plan Updates and Annual Goal Updates. Let's see, Ms. Glover's here, please.
Yes, so well, Ms. Glover, at this point, to give the financial statement and cash balances.
Thank you, Dr. Lamar. Board President Meadows, Vice President Collins, members of the board, and Dr. Sullivan in his absence, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
This is the financial statement and cash report balance for the fifth month, period ending February the 28th, 2025. For the general fund revenues for the state sources, we collected $63.7 million. We collected $62.3 million the prior year, so we are on level funding. For local sources, we collected $114.4 million out of a budget of $137.5 million. The prior year, we collected $124.4 million. Grand total of all of the revenues that we've collected year-to-date as of February 2025 was $180.3 million. For the general fund revenue, for the general fund expenditures, personnel cost, we expended $92.4 million as compared to $81.4 million the prior year. Purchase services were $23.9 million. Grand total of all expenditures for the month of February 2025 was $125.5 million. The prior year, we collected or expended, I'm sorry, $108.3 million. For the personnel cost, that was almost 74% of the budget, followed by purchase services, 19.1% of the budget. Other expenditures, 6.9% of the budget for February. As a recap, the total revenues was $180.3 million. Expenditures were $125.5 million. That left a net surplus. I'll need to review that dollar amount of $4.8 million as compared to the $81.1 million prior year. The beginning fund balance was $210.4 million. The ending fund balance, $265.2 million. The average monthly expenditure for the month of February was for the $21.1, $25.1 million as compared to the $21.6 million prior year. For the special revenue, this pulls in all the revenues expenditures that we collected so far for the month of February 2025. We collected $18 million as compared to the prior year of $16.5 million. For the expenditures, we expended so far $22.6 million, but in February of the prior year, $41 million was expended. All funds combined, this is the balance sheet, and it shows our total assets for the month of February 2025 was $297.3 million as compared to the prior year of $265.5. Our liabilities were for February $8.3 as compared to the $9.6 prior year. In all funds combined, this includes all of our general funds, federal funds, capital projects, and fiduciary funds. The total revenues collected were $201.3 million. The prior year, we collected $208.2 million. The expenditures were $154.4 as compared to the prior year of $162.5. This concludes the report for the financials for the month of February 2025. Are there any questions?
Mr. President, I've got.
Ms. Bowman.
Thank you for this. The amended budget that you plan to present to the state, what is your timeframe around working on that? And do working on that and do you have plans to involve the board in that conversation?
In prior months and then in prior years for the budget amendment, then we usually give the boards just the updates. The board usually has input on the annual proposed budget, but the budget amendment is being worked on as we speak and I won't be completed with that until possibly in the month of May. So we plan on bringing those in for the month of May. Usually for the budget amendments, you know, we bring in any of the funds that we got as new that were not part of the original budget, including carryover and just line item adjustments.
So if there was an opportunity for us to at least hear that before we're expected to vote on it at a board meeting and to perhaps have a small group where we could just hear it then?
That continues.
If you're not going to give us any info.
That continues. We will still do the small groups because that will be presented, um, still in the month of May.
Okay, that'd be great. And then I think you've, you mentioned this earlier, but I am interested in us looking at the possibility of getting a budget to actual report on a monthly basis instead of just the this year's budget compared to last year's, which is not as enlightening as a budget to actual would be. I didn't know where you stood on looking at that.
The budget to actual is a part of your big presentation that you get on a monthly basis.
Okay.
And it's one of the tabs. It's in your tab for budget to actual, you get it every month.
Okay. And is that something you might consider presenting to us? Um, I mean, as part of this presentation, a page, for example, where we would have a chance to look at that, just to highlight it as, um, a very important thing for us to think about.
Okay. If the board chooses, of course, um, also is always posted on a monthly basis on the website as well. So you do have it as part of the presentation that you receive and it's on the website. So if you like it to be incorporated, I can.
Okay, well, I would like the board to help, you know, decide about that. That's my personal feeling. Thank you.
Maybe you all can discuss that in a finance meeting, if that's something that you all want to bring to the board that we can consider.
I did want to add one thing on, um, Board President Wilson. You inquired about the, I think, the high school for the sports. For high school, they're paid after the season has ended and their season just ended March, the end of March. For the middle school, their season ended in February, so they were paid in February after the season has ended. We're now at March the tenth, I'm sorry, April the tenth, so this week they'll be receiving their stipend, but it's after the season has ended.
So, Mr. President, I like being called Mr. President. I've never had that deserved before. You're fine. Thank you so much for that answer.
Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Ms. Glover, for this presentation. I wanted to ask, um, I, my lens is always on, and what's happening nationally, of course, at the federal level and, um, recently Congresswoman Sewell made a social media post about some, um, opera funding that was essentially taken away in the Selma City School System. So I had two questions. I was curious, do we have any projects that are currently underway with the, um, city council that it affects opera funding or potential partnerships that we have on the books going forward? That you, that you, that you know of?
With the city council?
Yes, ma'am, with the city council.
The city council did do the good R and that was part of the.
That's right.
That's the only one that I can recall. That's a partnership, yes.
Yeah, so I'm, so do we know, maybe we should, um, ask the council if, um, their opera funding has been, um, impacted for the general public with the Board of Education or boards, um, we receive ESSER funding and local city government, city council members, mayor's offices receive opera funding was essentially the same as ESSER funding, it's just opera for local government. So, uh, thank you and, and we'll make sure we ask them about that. And then the second question I have, just as a result of that, um, from what I'm understanding, um, apparently in the opera case with Selma City, the funding was awarded but not drawn down by local government. So that's how it was determined, or not how, but it was determined that they would not be able to receive those funds. So I'm, um, I know we were given an extension on our ESSER funding, so do we already have access to our funding or we're depending on them to release it to us?
So prior to, and that's a good question, thank you for asking, the board did, um, do a late liquidation for the ESSER funding. We had to submit it to the State Department for approval. We did receive that approval and the late liquidation would be to expedite by January of twenty twenty six. However, we did get everything completed on schedule as it was already slated. So all of the funding, the monies we did, um, have on hand, we requested it and have received it. All projects closed, so we are completely, um, finalized.
Great, you had me hanging on the edge like, oh, it's not, no, thank you so much. Thank you, I appreciate that.
I should have said we were finalized.
Oh, no, that's good, that's good. You thoroughly explained it. Thank you for answering these questions. Thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you, Ms. Glover.
All right, this time we'll have Ms., uh, Ms. Marbury to come up for the strategic plan update.
Good evening to President Meadows, Vice President, Mr. Lamar, in lieu of Dr. Sullivan tonight. I come to discuss our strategic plan and to give you an update. Just as a reminder, our strategic plan has five priority areas. Tonight, I'm going to be discussing customer service. So when we discussed customer service as a priority area, I want to remind you of kind of our overarching discussion around partnerships. And that is that BCS will simplify and streamline communication methods so that all families, community partners, and other stakeholders will feel supported and have the information they need to meaningfully engage with the district. Now, I'm going to let you sit with that for just a moment as we move on. If you remember, in our strategic planning process, we started in twenty twenty three, we had addressed several stakeholders. I was not here at that time, but I will say that the work that was done before me, I was able to pick it up and these are the stakeholders that we addressed. Our board members, district leaders, principals and teachers, parent advisory groups, student advisory groups, local elected officials, nonprofit and business leaders, Alabama Legislative Delegation, higher education representatives, county commissioners, and our faith-based leaders. With that, we had those stakeholders engage in community meetings, one-on-one interviews, focus groups, and in a community survey. From that information, in the fall of twenty twenty four, we asked the question, does your organization receive communication and information that you need to meaningfully partner with Birmingham City Schools? And the answer was only twenty percent of those we surveyed said they received communications to meaningfully partner with Birmingham City Schools. I also asked, tell us more about how your organization receives communication and information you need to meaningfully partner with Birmingham City Schools District. What are we doing well and what can we improve? And I wanted to share a couple of comments with you. One was our organization is fortunate to be in close communication with key members of BCS. However, it would be helpful to have emails that inform us when changes are made at specific schools and or roles within the administration. Another comment is, it's evident that Birmingham City Schools District has a robust network of partners, which is a great strength. However, our organization often feels that we are approached more frequently with requests to fund things rather than opportunities for genuine collaborative partnerships. And lastly, I wanted to share this one. I appreciate the direct communication from teachers we work with in the school system. However, we rarely receive information about the general school system, ways we can meaningfully and how to partner and how we can serve the students of Birmingham City Schools. With those in account, I want to show you, we're starting at twenty percent, but we're not going to stay there. I'm making a definitive statement. We will not stay there. We have set a goal of twenty five percent and increase and at the end of this year, we're looking for forty five percent of our partners to be able to say that they receive communication where they can meaningfully partner with the district. And in order to do that, I'm going to share with you a couple of strategies and ways that in community engagement, we're working toward that forty five percent. This is our logo, BCS Connect. BCS Connect is more than a logo, it's more than a way of looking at the ecosystem that we have created in Birmingham City Schools to support our educators through partnerships. And these are the basic tenants of our ecosystem. We have school-based partners in Birmingham City Schools, we have district initiatives, we have a strategic plan. We are also fortunate to have a strong parent and family engagement department. We're going to focus on alumni relations, government relations, and I'm going to show you something called BCS Connect, which is our community engagement platform. All of these things would not come to fruition if we did not set priorities for community engagement in this district. These priorities are kind of our guidepost and they are to cultivate and retain current partners, rebuild trust, advance and speak to district priorities, and for family and parent engagement, we want to honor and recognize our families as partners. We want to connect family engagement to student learning and we also want to create and maintain a welcoming and inviting culture in all of our schools and here in central administration. And of course, engage our alumni because as we know, at BCS, success starts here. So let's dive a little more into BCS Connect. So if you were to go to the website, and I'm just going to hold and let you, show you example of a screenshot. If you were to go to the Birmingham City School website and look on the front page, it says volunteer opportunities. It takes you to BCS Connect, which is powered by GivePost. This is a platform that has been customized for Birmingham City Schools in a K-12 environment. It lets us quantify the events and volunteer opportunities that we have across our district. We are one of a few schools in the state of Alabama that has this technology, that's able to do this work and in this way. Right now, we have over sixteen thousand ROI, so that's sixteen thousand dollars worth of time that has been given to Birmingham City Schools since we started using this platform to fidelity since November of last year. You can also see the number of hours that we have, people have volunteered, the number of impacts, and the number of people. The good thing is, this platform, as it is used today, we're really focusing on building out our partner network. Starting in school year twenty five, we will also have opportunities for our students and our alumni and parents to also log in and be able to search for volunteer opportunities, internships. Yes, Mr. Phillips, we're going to work with you on those internships. So this will be a fully realized way for us to engage with our community. Another benefit to BCS Connect is that not only are we providing a way for people to serve Birmingham City Schools, but we're being a good neighbor. We are also affiliating with organizations that can post their events on this page as well. Some of those affiliates are the Birmingham Botanical Gardens, we have Art Play, we have, uh, UAB, the Community Care Development Network. These are all entities that serve our students, but we as BCS want to be good stewards and be a part of this community and give back, and this is one way we can do that. So I wanted to highlight a few other things that have happened in our community engagement space in Birmingham City Schools. This year, we were fortunate to partner with the Junior League of Birmingham. They offered career cafes to our students in middle schools from Hudson, Wilkerson, Washington, and Hayes K eight. Also, a few weeks ago, we had a summer learning expo for our principals and administrators and we were able to host over thirty different partners that came in and talked about things that could be done to expand summer learning in Birmingham City Schools. Now, I will stop because I'd be remiss if I said this was something that Ms. Marbury did because it wasn't all me. Part of the, the way that we look at community engagement in Birmingham City Schools is to look at this as a total partnership. So this was a joint effort between our academic department, our curriculum and instruction, and our Office of Partnerships. So again, we are paying homage to the fact that we want to build out a community in BCS. And lastly, I wanted to point out, one of the most exciting things that we've had in a long time, I absolutely enjoyed having the Howard University students who served in our high schools during their alternative spring break program. The students came and spent a week in our high schools and they had a culminating event where they talked to students about what it's like to be a college student, especially a college student in a HBCU. They also created a QR code that gave our students access to scholarships that were curated from their own experiences. And I want to thank all of our principals and Dr. Drake and the entire network for welcoming our Howard students. So again, this is not just one department, this is all of us working to support. And lastly, I want to end by again circling back to those community engagement guiding principles, which are integrity and excellence, innovation and balanced opportunities, and social and civic responsibility. I'm going to take a moment and just say that innovation and balanced opportunity is a must. Everything that we do is built on the idea, these opportunities should be spread across our district. This is what makes BCS strong, the opportunity for all of our students. And I'm going to echo what I heard in here tonight because my heart was warmed with the exposure of our students, those opportunities, that learning to be socially and civically responsible are just things we cannot miss with our students. So thank you, and do you have any questions?
Mr. Sullivan.
I have a few questions, but first I want to say, um, thank you for, uh, for the presentation. Uh, no, you're honest with the, the baseline score that we have, so I think it's important that we know where we are. Um, and I would be interested in if I, sorry if I missed it, but could we, could I see the, all of the results to the survey that we, um, that, that we have? Is it possible to get that in an email or something?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, and I want to say thank you too. I had mentioned it at the board, I guess, the retreat or training, but I have been to, uh, a few school, or all of my schools and I've seen this, the QR code that's in front of the school when you walk in the front door, so that gives a parent's opportunity to, uh, give feedback and, uh, let the school know like how they're doing, so I think that's important. So I want to thank, um, you all for doing that. Um, who, like, who's going to be respons, I saw your name on the BCS Connect, or is it going to be you that's responsible? I know it's a part of the, possibly the strategic plan, so it's, I guess it's a collective effort?
It is. So with BCS Connect, I'm the primary administrator on the district level. However, as you're aware, we have district partnerships, we have school partnerships, and we have some dynamic teachers who we saw tonight who also have partnerships with their classes. So for BCS Connect, I am the primary administrator, but there are forty three community, um, partners at each school and they're responsible for their school.
Okay. Um, and what does success, are we looking for like engagement or just like posting of events or participation, like what would success, is it just more of an engagement type of tool that we're looking for?
So it's twofold. One is, we want to be able to quantify our efforts. Um, in the past, we used Sign Up Genius, which gave us a pathway for people to sign up for certain events, but we couldn't look back and say, okay, if we had this event, um, how many people were there? Where did they come from? Um, what were their interests? How do we reach back out to them? This platform gives us all of it. We're able to engage them not only at this one event, but at multiple events if we want to. And I will also add this, um, when a person registers, they also get. And I will also add this, when a person registers, they also get an email thanking them for registering. They get a direct contact at the school for whatever event it is, and they get instructions on how to come into the school safely. So they understand they'll need to use the Raptor system.
Okay. And my last, I guess, comment or question, I know all of the, you know, the points of our strategic plan is important, especially academic excellence, but I think, as I mentioned before, like customer service, I think is something that we can improve instantly, whether it be just picking up the phone or responding to emails. I just think that, you know, we can definitely improve in that. I think as a district, we all know that. I just want us to, you know, put more focus on the easy things that we can do. And it's not, I'm not directing it towards you, I'm just in general as a district. Let's try to focus on just the low-hanging fruit that we can, that we can improve. But again, I want to thank you for the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question. I, thank you for the Birmingham, the BCS Connect website. That looks wonderful. I do see you have a note on that homepage that says, "Partners click here." Do we know how many partners have clicked? And I'm mostly interested in the district partners, in addition, I suppose, to the school-based partners, but do you know the, or could you give us the number of district partners that we have?
So on the very front page, that line that shows you the ROI, it shows you, that's exactly how many people have registered as partners.
Okay.
That's the beautiful part of it. We can actually see it in real time.
Ninety-two people then, or an eighty-seven impact? So ninety-two people, but do they represent nine, you think they represent ninety-two organizations? Or could you help us understand that? I'm curious about making sure we have a complete list of all of our district partners.
We can pull that information for you.
And then I worry too that I didn't hear a lot about personally connecting with those key district partners versus via, except through the website. So are there plans to convene people on a monthly basis?
Yes. And again, like I told you, we have both district partners, we have school partners. And one thing that I have been stressing with our school partnership coordinators, because we meet monthly, is the ability, kind of training them in how to speak that language, that one BCS language, which is very important. They are very aware of when they have someone come in the school and volunteer. We're doing, we're going old school. We're sending thank yous. We are also acknowledging organizations that are working with us and asking them, okay, thank you for coming to BCS. What can we do to help you as well? We spend a lot of time looking at ways we can be mutually beneficial when there are events that are community events that we can also support through BCS.
Great. And so just, just want to be sure we are doing that at the district level as well as at the school level?
We are.
Ms. Williams?
I, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I too share, I think I share some of the same questions that Board Member Sullivan and Board Member Bohm asked as well. I think I'm not really clear on the overall purchase, purpose of BCS Connect. I think it, I mean, I think having another location where people can, partners can go and get centralized information is important. I, I am concerned that as we start to list partners or events, not partners, but events on this BCS Connect for, for, I'm not sure if we were talking about listing events that partners are having on here, or if we're just talking about someone from the general public saying, we're hosting an event, we'd love for people in the district to know about it.
No, you have to affiliate with us in order to get on site. That's why we have administrators at all levels.
So I remember, and I think this was a pain point for Board Member Smith a while back, us as a district defining who partners are versus vendors and being very explicit in that definition so that we could, I think as a board, for me, it would benefit me to know who exactly is a partner. And then to Ms. Bohm's point on this, on the screenshot that we have here, if people represent partners, then maybe it'll be better suited to say partners as opposed to people because I'm thinking individuals. So maybe just us happy, just it being clean and then us being able to direct people to BCS Connect because we have, I think we have a number of ways that people are connecting. I guess my overall question, and you don't have to answer any of these questions tonight because it's a lot, but I think it's just a more, a little bit more for us to think through, but how does, and to Board Member Sullivan's point, thank you for being transparent in the comments, because sometimes we get, you know, all the positive responses, but this is very where we are, or where their thoughts were at that time, but how do we take BCS Connect and get to the bottom line of these comments that our partners have given feedback on?
So BCS Connect is one of the ways that we do that. When we talk about making sure that they have information, they can log into BCS Connect, and because I'm the administrator for the district, they can simply send me a message and I'll reply back. If they say, because that's happened before, people will say, I'll give you an example, Art Play. Art Play was having a program, and they wanted to know how they could get the program out to Birmingham City School students and families. So I received an email through BCS Connect. I replied back, sent it to our media team, and it was put out through the district. And so I think that what a lot of people have told me, when I've had conversations with groups that have partnered with the district, because I'm constantly meeting people and constantly trying to build out those partnerships, is that it's hard to get in, or once I get in, where do I go next? So that is part of, BCS Connect is just one piece of that. But the way that I want you to think about this, and the way that we spoke about the fact that our partnerships don't land in one place, but that it takes a whole ecosystem to make this work. Because if there's a partnership that addresses families and parents, then that may be something I direct toward Dr. Douglas. If there's something that directs toward our arts department, that's when I will contact Dr. Mays. So just making sure that people get where they need to go when they contact this district is important because that's what I've heard, those first steps. This is the first step.
Thank you. I just, I just, you know, again, a number of questions. I don't know, maybe Dr. Lamar, if we could actually make, possibly have a small group just on this, because I, for me, I'm thinking about, I mean, we have, we have initiatives out of our communications department that is happening with our website, the app, all these different things, and just not, not convoluted what we have to offer to partners, but I also would like our partners to feel like in a partnership, I mean, they're, they're a special entity. They are someone that is different from just others who may want to come and volunteer. And so those, and I think this is what Ms. Bohm may be trying to lead to, those partners that are highly, I mean, all of our partners are highly valuable. When we think about partners that we're financially investing in, no point intended, but example, United Way of Central Alabama with our High Doses Tutorial Program. That's a partner that we want to be, I think, have them in a pool of other partners on their level where they are working. So the last question I have, and again, I really would, if, if we could, not if, I know we can, just suggesting that we could have a small group meeting around this to maybe flush this out a little bit more, but questions about when our schools have partners, are the partners filtered through the district? Are those partners able to go directly to the schools?
So part of my presentation, you couldn't see tonight because you can go to the website and actually see that each school has their own page and events that are specific to those schools. So if we have a small group, I can walk you through that, and you'll be able to see all the functionality of it. But I wanted to just introduce it to you as a part of this kind of community engagement ecosystem we're building.
And I do mean thank you for, you know, for at least looking for solutions on how we can try to accommodate the needs of our partners because it is important. And I mean, we are a huge district, and everybody wants to be a part of BCS. And so thank you for, you know, looking through this.
You're welcome. And remember, I was a partner, so I understand that lens. I understand that lens quite well.
Mr. Billups?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you again for the presentation. Question regarding, because you brought it up about internships and so forth, and I am specifically interested in your thoughts about what strategy are you currently employing, and what are you envisioning as far as those, those partnerships for the interns? Because I'm specifically acting about in regards to some of our partnerships and whatever vendors we may have, how are we looking at bringing them on board to expose students to those careers within those fields with those partners as well?
So we're looking to actually have a fair where we will bring in partners that are specifically related to internships, apprenticeships, and the like. Right now, because we're at a baseline with this, we are starting out by really building out our partners that are coming to do volunteer work directly at the school or volunteer work that's happening on district level. We will next move to having the partner fair where we, the partner model where we will have those that come in that are specifically related to internships and apprenticeships because we want to have this fully realized by the beginning of the school year next year so that our students who will have access then will be able to go in and look for these internships and apprenticeships.
Okay. I think part of what I'm looking at as well, you know, my day-to-day job, every day, what I do, what I do, is that looking at students who will have an opportunity to do that based on their schedule, plan properly in the springtime as they prepare for the fall, that those internship opportunities will be available for them to start in their fall senior year or their junior, senior year in the fall or in the spring. I just want to make sure we have a great runway and make sure that they're standardized as far as the practices and the experience of those students across the board, whether that be with pay disparities that we see in some of our programming, make sure they're all on the same page, professional development is all on the same page, that every student has a standardized approach and also experience when it comes to our internships. And maybe when you talk to our employer, our partners, that they are bought in when they come in and partner with us, that this is something that we may expect for them to be a part of as well.
Well, I'd love for you to help me be a thought partner on that.
I sure will.
Ms. Harvey?
Really simple question. Where it has like the financial impact, is, so are those actual cash contributions from these different?
No.
Could you explain that part?
So for every hour that is given and voluntary hours, there is a monetary amount attached to it. And I will say that amount fluctuates due to the nonprofit space at times. It can go as low as thirty-four dollars, it's been as high as forty-three dollars an hour. Yes, it is.
Okay, yep, that makes sense.
It is. But again, it just gives us a look and we're able to quantify what we're, what's being given to our district.
It's really important, especially, I mean, those are important metrics to put on grant applications.
Yeah.
And Board Member Williams, we'll connect with Dr. Sullivan in all small groups.
And I just want to reiterate something that I think Ms. Williams said for everyone. There's a difference between partners, like one of the comment was that they are being asked for dollars. So I've heard that, I can pretty much guess who said that. And so for the viewing audience who might wonder, like, is the superintendent calling, asking people or are board members? If you look at donations on our agenda, oftentimes there are certain programs that can't be funded through federal, state, or local dollars. And so those programs, coaches have to solicit those dollars. Maybe it's for a piece of equipment for a football member or it's a band trip. Again, those, a lot of the dollars that come from a state, the funding formula does not allow for you to pay for those things. And so that's why across the country, locally, they have PTA and fundraisers, and you know, you have some school districts that raise millions of dollars just from their parents donating. These are not, these are facts. And so a lot of times, those are school-based requests. I actually entertained one recently, and they're genuine request because if your students can't afford to participate in certain programs, but you still want to expose them, maybe they might need some, some new cleats for a track team or something to that nature. And so there's a difference between a vendor who we pay and a partner who gives free, like it's a part of their mission and their budget to offer certain programs. And so I think a lot of times, I'm guilty, we're guilty of using those terms interchangeably, but if we're paying someone to do a service, they're really not a partner that, they are a vendor, and there's a contract that guides the expectations of what they're supposed to do. And so they are always in contact with whoever they work with. And so again, I think that is something that's heard, and you know, it could be confusing if you're hearing that and wondering what is a partner. The other thing I would say is I want to give a shout out again, I want to agree with my colleagues on the transparency of sharing that information. I think that's important, that we are being transparent to the community. And I also want to give a shout out to Ms. Marbury because she is not always, as she mentioned, been in this role. And since she has been in this role, I've been able to, because I also too worked for a partner prior to being on the board, and an organization that was giving dollars, not requesting dollars. Again, there's a difference. Our program was not, we were fundraising on our own, raising grants on our own, and taking donor dollars on our own, and we're partnering with the school district. So I understand. I will say that since Ms. Marbury has been on, my experience has been, not only is she communicating with these partners, but also setting up meetings, and people are pleased, and that was not the case prior to you being in that role.
Thank you.
And so I want to, again, this is real-time, like, response. I want to say thank you for, for responding. And so I feel like we're heading in the right direction, and so I really appreciate what you're doing, and thank you for that update.
Thank you. I have one thing I just want to bring forward too, is that tomorrow, our senior scholars will be having a hiring fair. Did I, did I take it? That our senior scholars will be having a hiring fair tomorrow. This is something that's hosted by our Post-Secondary Success Department. It is from nine to one. Our students will be able to meet with potential employers. And right now, this morning, I think Dr. Reese told me they had sixty who were going to be in attendance, which is wonderful. And from nine to one is for students, and from one-thirty to three is alumni and parents. So I just wanted to make sure I brought that forward. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, colleagues, I want, how did, how did, how did Dr. Lamar do you all? What do you all think? He said, "Don't put that in evaluation." You did a good, very good job. I also want to open up for any announcements, colleagues. Ms. Williams?
Thank you. I'll be, I'll go first and be quick. So first, congratulations again to the teachers in District Two for being announced as Teacher of the Year. Ms. Kenisa, I apologize if I mispronounced your name, but Ms. Kenisha Davis from Osseware, Mitchell Middle School, Putnam Middle School, Ms. Lakeisha Jones. And from WJ, since we are K-8, we have two, Ms. Andrea Brown Smith and Ms. Terrica Taylor Barlow. Congratulations on being announced as Teacher of the Year for your schools. Thank you so much for what you do for our scholars in the district. And then also sharing an announcement on behalf of Board Member Smith, Birmingham Sister Cities Education Committee has opened the 2025 International Dual Enrollment Academy Applications. If we recall, this is the opportunity the scholars had to go to Japan and also experience the campus of the Great Mouse College. She says that students can go to Birmingham Sister Cities website for the application and criteria, but at the least, you must be a junior or senior in high school, and students will have the opportunity to earn up to nine credit hours at Mouse College and take a trip to Ghana in the fall. Applications are due by April the twenty-fifth. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome, Ms. Williams. Any more announcements, colleagues? Mr. Collins?
Certainly wanted to congratulate the teachers, the year for the hard work that they do. I just, we had a board training, a whole board training this weekend. One of the, the points that the instructor gave was is how impactful, well-trained, educated teachers are, and that the, how they compare with teachers that are not trained. So those ones that are nationally certi, board certified, we certainly applaud them and encourage them more to get, to reach that status because we know that what they bring to the table benefits our students and their, their growth. I want to announce that we will be having a finance committee meeting on Friday at eleven-thirty. Please come out, tune in. I think we'll have capabilities to tune in. No, we're going to work on it. No, we gonna work on it. They ain't gonna work on it, okay. So, but, but yes, this is an opportunity. We've been, you know, it's been a while since we've had one, so it's an opportunity to just, we're gonna talk about a number of things. So if you have the opportunity to come out and be a part of our committee meeting, I think that's about all.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, just real quick, just a few things. I had an opportunity to participate in, I guess, a nonprofit called High Five Birmingham at Oliver Elementary yesterday morning. It, it puts you in the mind of like the first day of school, you know, they roll out the red carpet and High Five students as they're coming in, in the morning. There's another one, I was looking for the, the text message, but it's going to be in Arrington.
Which, what day is it?
April the fourteenth. Okay, so if you're available to go out, you know, please do so. It's a, it's a, you know, great scene to see the kids. You know, they jump out the car and they all surprised, and you know, they get all excited. So that's, that's always a pleasure to see. The fire department was there, had an opportunity to see Chief, Chief Moon again. We, we done a lot of work when I was the neighborhood president, and he's always excited to support initiatives like that. Finally had a meeting with Director Moore of the Operations Committee, a one-on-one type of a meeting, just kind of getting his ideas of how he wanted to present information to the board. I know some board members had some questions about some operation items, so he did commit that he were, he was going to try to get those answered by the end of the week. And the plan is to start having the operations meeting along with the updates during the, I guess, the work session or regular board meetings. But we're going to try to start having the meetings starting April, at the end of April. And usually we would do every three months, it just depends on what we, what we have going on. I just want the board to know that we're working on getting that committee back up and, up and going. So, because I know a lot of board members have questions about items, of course, all over the district, but in particular their district as well. So I just wanted to share that information, and that's all I have, our person.
Ms. Harville?
Also, this is valuable for our parents, listening audience, any educators, to encourage our scholars to apply for the Birmingham City Kids and Jobs Program. Kids and Jobs applications are going, you want to complete those this week because onsite interviews are Saturday at the Boutwell. There's a exposure component for fourteen and fifteen-year-olds, lots of different sites that they can intern with. And then there's an executive component for sixteen to twenty-four-year-olds. The requirements, I can just rattle off a few of those, two-point-oh GPA, need a current resume. I've had the pleasure of working with several fourteen and fifteen-year-olds to help them actually build a resume. So sometimes they think because they don't have technically work experience that they don't have the ability to build a resume. But the leadership in the classroom, in your school clubs, in sports, all of those things can be added to the resume. And so even though it's a short window of opportunity now to get those things in, it is such a valuable opportunity to make some money this summer. So you want to have a two-point-oh GPA, a resume. There's a question to answer, and I'll give the website in just a minute. And you also need two letters of recommendation. That can be from a teacher, from a coach, from, you know, someone else that's in your school, or maybe someone who knows you from the community. Again, those are right there on the spot. They're going to interview you at the Boutwell. The website is bhameuthfirst.org, bhameuthfirst.org. And again, there are two tracks that our scholars can intern with.
Mr. Billups?
Just wanted to add as well, in regards to the, had the pleasure of joining our students who are part of the Birmingham Promise and their internship program at Alabama Power on today. Those students had an opportunity to work with the organization for twelve-week period, and they were paid again an hourly rate of fifteen dollars an hour over the course of time, encompassing over a hundred and eighty hours of work hours on those sites. It was wonderful to see the students present their experience, particularly being given the authority to lead various projects. One particular project that those students were working on was creating a newsletter for the entire organization. That organization, that, that project that they were fulfilling and meeting, they have full control over as far as the graphics and so forth, the information and content. At the end of this, of this term, those students were recognized by the organization because that newsletter is going to be disseminated across, and has been desired and requested across the entire company. And so they, they will be adopted through South Alabama and so forth. And so just wanted to recognize that what was accomplished with those students, they expressed a, a great deal of delight in having the experience and also the exposure and work with those various departments and finding out more about what Alabama Power does, not just turn on lights. Also, I will be, we will also be working with Alabama, excuse me, not Alabama, but Birmingham Waterworks Board on this Friday will also be doing a presentation with our students during another luncheon, and those students will also be presenting in that space as well. I would say that the application process right now is currently open for any students who are looking at being a part of the internship program for the upcoming academic school year. Currently, there are nearly four hundred applicants that are already applied, and they're going through a process right now of completing it in order to be, start with the matching process with those employer partners. We work with over a hundred different employer partners across the area as well. And so if you will, encourage those students to go ahead and complete that process until we can begin matching them with potential partners for the upcoming year. Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
I, just really quick, because we, you know, we come down, so we should applaud. I just wanted to thank Mr. Moore and my colleagues. We had the opportunity on Friday after our training to go to our, and Ms. Arlene Williams, our upcoming pre-K through one school and look at the progress it's making, that's take, that's happening over on the east side of town. So really excited about what is happening in there. I mean, you could feel the energy from Ms. Williams and her team, and I mean, just the vision that they have for what's about to happen in that facility. And it was just, it was a really thorough walkthrough and really exciting, and just even hearing some of the history that was found inside the building when they were preparing it for this, these modifications that are taking place today. So really, really eager that this project continues. And so thank you from the Finance Department who's making sure that, you know, funding's being drawn down properly, used properly, and just everyone that's involved in this whole process, really excited about it. Thank you.
I have a quick comment. I just wanted to congratulate Ms. Harville on a very successful five-K, no, run, walk on Saturday. It was great to see it in action, and it was successful, and it is helping Sixth Avenue's Community Development Organization to offer some summer programming for our kids. So thank you for that. And, and I know that the police athletic teams are getting started, the new police commissioner and the crime commission have said that they want a deeper partnership with some of our kids and kids in the city, and, and they're stepping up to do some beginnings of some work with our kids in these athletic teams. And I think that's wonderful because it was a great thing we used to have, and now we are building on that again. So thank you to them for that, the mayor as well. Thanks.
Dr. Lamar?
Dr. Clasberry, do you mind sharing the hiring events that we have taking place?
Yes, sir. Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
On next Wednesday, the sixteenth, we will have our networking event at the Birmingham Museum of Art, starting at five PM. And then on Thursday, we will be at A.H. Parker High School for our actual hiring event, and that will start at four o'clock. Thank you.
That's awesome. We need as many more, you know, able-bodied and smiling faces and well-trained, please apply. I want to give a shout out to Southampton and the Hygiene Hub. They're going to, I'll close my computer, they're going to have their ribbon cutting on their new location. Let's see here, Ms. Clark sent it to me today, it's on May the eighth. I know it's in Ansl, I'll give me, give me a second, I'll pull that up. I also want to, you know, you can tell when people love you when they leave you and they come back and see you again. And so I see a very familiar face over here, Mr. Robert, so good to see you back in the house. Can we put our hands together for him? You missed him over there? Look, hey, I looked up and I said, wow, that face looks familiar. We saw him at the game, we, we, it's so good to see you, sir. And I'm glad to know that we're still in your heart, because you, yes, sir, yes, sir, we miss you. And he's serving in with us tonight. And so I think that really, I can't find it here, trying to do two things, walk and chew bubble gum at the same time. But I, I'm just again, here we go. The Hygiene Hub ribbon cutting will be Wednesday, May eighth, at five-thirty, and the location is at Renew Birmingham on Eleventh, Eighteen-O-One Avenue H. And so just excited for Ms. Clark and those students. They did not win the national competition, and so, but they are still in the runnings for an additional twenty-five thousand dollars that they should find out by the end of this month. I think that concludes all the announcements. Our, let's see here, our next meeting. Yes, our next meeting will be Tuesday, April the twenty-second, that'll be our work session, and our next board meeting will be May the thirteenth. This meeting is now adjourned.
The two go hand in hand. In Birmingham City Schools, teachers provide the instruction and nurturing she needs.
When I grow up, I want to be a meteorologist. I started my journey here at Oxmoor Valley Elementary when I was five years old. They make learning fun with computers and technology. My teachers encourage me every day to do my best.
Birmingham City Schools, success starts here.
Scholars in Birmingham City Schools get the tools and support they need for success every day. Educators encourage students from pre-kindergarten to high school to reach their highest potential. I'm Cory Cunningham, a Milken Award winner for two thousand and twenty-three. It's exciting to collaborate with educators to help guide students. Today, thousands of BCS scholars are in classrooms and labs or working on engaging projects to boost their learning. Tomorrow, our students will be the leaders of Birmingham, Alabama, and the world.
Birmingham City Schools, success starts here.